We're starting our April 1st meeting, 2015. With that, I will call this meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Next up, we have a roll call. Start voting, please. Holly?
All councilors present, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next up, we have the agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
There is not.
I motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda approval? If not, start voting, please. Holly?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have citizen comment. And tonight, we are delighted to have Dorothy Brant. Come up and visit with us, Dorothy, at the podium. Thank you. And Jane Salisbury as well, but are you coming up together?
Coming up together.
Thank you.
She has three minutes, and I have three.
You have six minutes total.
Don't tell her that, I'll over you two.
Good evening. We thank you very much for allowing us to be here. And we like to come because we like to bring you good news. There's so much bad news in the world. And I have two things to bring up to you very quickly within this three minutes. And I thought of writing you a poem too, but I decided that'd be a little too much after what I'd done in Denver. So, anyway, I wanted to give you a report. We've never had anything but absolute warm welcomes up there. And there is nobody in the legislature at this time that doesn't know about the San Luis Valley, the museum, the city council, the county, all of our programs. And I guarantee you that it was the warmest welcome you could ever imagine. And the museum, the Denver Nature Science Museum, hosted our program afterwards. I was up there to present what the museum is good for, what it does for the community, the economy, and all of that. And they treated us like we were royalty. It was absolutely wonderful. And I thought I made a real hit with the two people that worked there, one gentleman and one lady. And the day after I got back, there was an email and said the delight of the entire program for them that night was when I found them and came up to them to talk with them. And the lady has her PhD and all the beautiful things we're doing in the museum. And she has offered to come down, and it probably will be summer, but definitely by early fall. So, we've made contact there that is just going to be absolutely fabulous for the programs. And they've invited me up to speak to them again sometime. So, I am absolutely delighted about this. And when you've got such a good subject as the San Luis Valley, you just can't go. And they were very interested, and veterans, talked to them about that program and what we're doing here. And so, it was just a wonderful, wonderful time. And the other thing I wanted to be here tonight was to thank you before. I'm not asking for money, not at all. I don't want any money.
It's gonna make me do that.
No. But I'm here tonight because your city manager has worked with us from the beginning. And you probably are wondering what I did with that $1,000 that you approved for me. But at the museum, we take steps very carefully, baby steps, one at a time. It's the old American way. We are building toward that conference we told you about. We have not spent that money yet, and we are working around it. We have little bits of money that we're putting into it from other ways. And so, we are building toward that great conference. And we're going to invite a lot of women veterans in here. And we hope it will be within the year. But we're not sitting still. We didn't spend your money. It's safe. I hope you haven't spent it. But it is safe. Anyway, and I just wanted to tell you those couple of things. In about a month from now, I'd like to get back to you, get on your agenda, and bring you up to date on every program that's going and exactly where the museum is. Because we could not be happier. We're just extremely pleased at how we're doing. And now, this old World War II veteran that's hobbling along would like to introduce you to Jane Salisbury. And Jane is a Vietnam veteran. And she's doing great things with the women over there, this program that's under the sponsorship of the museum. So, Jane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy, and welcome, Jane.
Thank you very much. The VA estimates that there's about 5,000 veterans in the valley. And the rough estimate would be about 10% of those are women veterans, or 500 of them, which seems like an awful lot. But even if there's only 200 or 300, that's still a lot. We know of about 30. So, one of our goals is to find the other women veterans. I'm going to tell you briefly about three projects. First one starts in May, this coming May, middle of the month, probably. This is a free coffee break for all veterans. It will be held at the museum on every Saturday morning from 8:00 to 11:00. There'll be free coffee, free pastries for those who get there first. And it'll take a couple of months. We hope to get about 40, 50 regular veterans coming every Saturday after a couple of months. The next project, we have already written a proposal for this. We're seeking funding. This is to bring arts into that free coffee break. Veterans who are artists from the valley or the region will be invited to come and show the veterans their art, how they produce their art. Eventually, we will have the veterans making their own art during this coffee break. And with enough money, we will also hire a trained physical or a trained psychologist who also does art therapy. There are a number of veterans with PTSD and traumatic brain injuries who really need a little extra therapy. Art therapy has proven to be very, very effective. But the VA does not offer anything like that outside of Denver. The third project, I wouldn't, the third project is one for which we are also seeking funding now. We have a proposal, and that is to find the women veterans in the valley. This will be scattering posters throughout the valley about meetings, about what we could do together, and then start collecting their histories, their oral histories, what we do for the women veterans. We will work out the bugs and how to do all that, and then we'll do it for the men. But we'll be the guinea pigs first.
Well, thank you, ladies. We appreciate you being here. We want to thank you for the wonderful leadership as ambassadors to our Women's Veterans Group as well as the museum and the entire San Luis Valley. Thank you for being here.
Well, listen, just to say goodbye to you tonight, you don't have too big a crowd, so I can do that. I wouldn't impose that you have them lined up. But I would like to say that none of us are doing this for ourselves. And we have found, and you know how it is, women and men are different. We are caretakers. And this is something, we are military, but we're also caretakers. And we want you to know us. And we're trying to be visible now because we want you to know the fantastic women veterans that are in this valley. And I tell you, it broke my heart when we lost one of our own, Faith Hinkley. And I was standing on the street when she was being taken by for the grave. And so many people standing around me said, "I don't know, we had women in Iraq? And now they don't know we have them in Afghanistan?" And so, we want to make a difference. We want you to know who we are, and we want to work with you. And we feel that these veterans coming in here are bringing things. We're not asking for things. We are bringing things, and we want to help our own. So, I thank you very, very much. Thank you.
And thank you, Dorothy. Counsel, does anyone have a comment or a question of these ladies? If not, we'll move on to a follow-up, and there's no follow-up here. So, ceremonial items, we have none. Next up is Consent Calendar A. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting, March 18, 2015. And I believe that Counselor Johnson has a question or concern on the Consent Calendar A. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Regards to the minutes, the Regular Business 1A, Paragraph 2, it reflects that with the ice hockey multi-use facility, it reflects that the ongoing costs would be about $45,000 to $46,000. It needs to reflect that that's an additional $45,000 to $46,000, I believe, to make the minutes correct.
Yes, do we need a, Heather?
That is correct. The councilman caught me before the meeting to have me take a look at that, and it is an, it would make it more accurate. So, that would be a good addition.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Johnson, for that correction. Appreciate that. Did you have a?
With that change, I would move that we approve Consent Calendar A as presented.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? Seeing none, start voting, please. I'm missing one. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have presentation from outside businesses under Regular Business. And tonight, we have the 2015 Roundup Presentation and Request. Please come up to the podium. Dawn, and introduce yourself and your address for the record, please.
My name is Dawn Honeycutt, 5543 Stanley Road, Alamosa. Thank you all for having me. We wanted to come in and just give you an update of how things are going and how things are looking for this year. I've included a calendar of events. Most of it is what we discussed when we came in November. Not a lot of changes there, except we are going to be, they're going to be doing a Little Bridges rodeo that weekend before. So, we will actually have more than a week of rodeo in the valley. So, that'll be fun. First off for us for the Roundup will be Tuesday night, 7:00 PM Ranch Rodeo. Wednesday night will be the kickoff barbecue, mutton busting, and local barrel race. Thursday afternoon, high noon, will be the cattle drive-in parade. 7:30 will be the first night of professional rodeo. Friday, we'll have our PRCA Slack in the morning. That's all the extra cowboys that we can't fit into the performances. And that's when you'll see all the trailers in town, especially at Chili's. And then, 7:30 PM that night, we'll have our second performance of professional rodeo. That will again be our National Guard Military Appreciation Night. And they'll be bringing a group of guys that have just finished a training, and they'll be treated to the rodeo and their families. And then, that night is the rodeo block party on San Juan Avenue. Saturday night will be the demolition derby. And then, Sunday, we'll have Cowboy Church. And then, we've teamed up with the train. We'll have the Mountain Rails Live Concert Train featuring Mark Chestnut this year. So, that's really exciting. And then, Lord willing, it's a long way off, but December 18th will be the Fifth Annual Christmas Light Parade. So, that's kind of where I wanted to start when we came in. We hadn't had the Christmas Light Parade yet. Now, that's in the past for us, and it was fantastic. I thought it went over really good. We had more floats than we ever had, more people in town than we ever had, and we just had a really good time. So, I'm glad that we're able to continue to do that. I've included our budget for you, more detailed than we have in the past. I just feel like you guys are partners, and I don't feel like there's anything to hide. So, that's all the dirty details. You're welcome to look at that. You can see at the top where we're at as far as need from help for the city and from the tourism. They've already gone ahead and approved $5,000 for them. And that's all public records. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about the crowds. They have been growing. I didn't include a graph this time, but it was included last time in your packet. But we have a number of people that are even coming from overseas, coming to see their first rodeo. They're getting ahold of us through Facebook and on our website, and that's really exciting to me. I knew we were reaching out of the state, but I didn't know we were reaching out of the country. So, that's pretty neat. A lot of people coming, planning their family reunions around the rodeo, coming to the valley youth groups, a number of youth groups. And then, there's a large number of people who have been coming every year for 35 years and just continue to come. So, I'm excited that you guys will have a chance. If you so desire to come this year, you won't be at conference, so that's really exciting. We do continue to try to add new things and keep it exciting and at a professional level. I know we've made great strides and with your help to bring the PRCA rodeo back to Alamosa. And so, we're doing our best to keep that at a top professional level. We bring in the top announcers, bullfighters, specialty acts. We get a lot of the top cowboys and cowgirls because we set our dates so that they're the same time as a big rodeo in Santa Fe. And so, those cowboys and cowgirls come over here, and we get to make use of that, which is great. This year, we're in talks with a specialty act. Her name is Madison McDonald. She's a trick rider, which for those of you who don't know, it's like gymnastics on a running horse. And so, that's pretty neat. She's been to the NFR four times as a specialty act there, the National Finals Rodeo. And she's got a group of girls that she'll be bringing, assuming we can get the budget approved, from Canada, Tennessee, and Texas. And they'll all be coming to make that something special. And then, there's another thing right below that in yellow, but I'm keeping that a secret, but not from you guys, that we're going to be adding as just a little special surprise at the end of each rodeo night. So, all of that obviously costs a lot of money. We're pretty much working with a $75,000 expense budget. So, it's a huge undertaking, but one that is going well, but that is definitely in need of help and continued help. I think we're going to get to the point where we won't, and I hope that is soon for your sake and for mine, so I don't have to keep coming up here. I just want you to know that I do appreciate all that you've done and all you continue to do to make it a success. We couldn't do it without you, and I just wanted to let you know where we were at.
Thank you very much, Dawn. I know there are a lot of folks that enjoy the rodeo and all the entertainment that goes along with it. And it's really something to look forward to here in the valley. And this year, I know that Counsel will not be attending the CML that coincides with this. So, many of us, I'm sure, are going to be at these functions. And we look forward to that. Thank you very much. Heather, what is a normal procedure when it comes to allocating funds for nonprofits or organizations like this?
The line item that you have in your budget is actually called sponsorships. And this year, we have the same amount as we did last year, which is $10,000. Last year, and in 2013, Counsel awarded $5,000 for this program. And in 2012, they awarded $7,500. So, tonight, if you made a motion and voted on an amount, we could process that. We could get an invoice and then process that payment as part of a sponsorship.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel? Counselor, who was first?
Go ahead.
Griege?
That fund that you're talking about, how many other people come and ask for those kind of funds? Because I know that we're having a tough time when we put that money aside to try to cover as many programs as possible.
Last year, the other two programs you funded out of, one you ended up doing was the barbecue for 5,000, and then the request for the women's conference. But when that changed away from being a conference, it was going to come from a different fund. So, the only other item you funded was the barbecue amount. I didn't, I don't recall receiving another formal request. I'm not sure if staff received it, and we might have said the budget's been spent. So, I can't tell you about the previous years.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Dawn, for the presentation. And I'm happy that we'll be available this year to attend. I want to commend you on teaming with the railroad and doing the concert. That's working together very well, good idea. I'm glad that sort of stuff is happening. And you got a great act, Mark Chestnut, perfect for your clientele. And just teaming with the railroad was a terrific idea. Thanks for doing that. Appreciate what you do for our community.
Thank you.
Counselor Stefano?
Thank you, Dawn. Good presentation. This rodeo is getting big. It's really neat. Thank you very much for the hats.
You're welcome.
Counselor DeLisby?
Yes. Can you tell me how many years we've funded this rodeo?
We came back with the PRCA rodeo in 2010. So, this would be the fifth year.
Fifth year. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Griege?
I had a question on, Dawn, on some of this. On the third page, there's, you got two categories, I mean, two lists there. There's one that says scoreboard for 1,000. What is that?
Well, that's the scoreboard that we bring in for the rodeo and demolition derby. You haven't been there, so you probably haven't seen it. It's a large scoreboard, shows all the sponsors for the different events, shows the scores that the cowboys receive, times, stuff like that. Kind of like at a sport, like a normal sporting event. But it does show graphics and other things like that. So, it's 2,000 for the rodeo, and then I just allocate 1,000 of that, a third of it, to the demolition derby also.
So, this, like you say, it's just a big scoreboard, or?
Yeah, it's a big screen that they bring in. It's even able to play short video clips and stuff like that.
Oh.
It's full color. It's pretty nice.
The reason I was bringing that up is maybe it's time that we buy our own scoreboard, but it's something that's spectacular. I don't think we could afford something that big, huh?
Yeah. I'm not sure that we could, yeah.
Yeah.
And the guy that brings it, I mean, he's a friend of ours, and so, he gives us a pretty good deal.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heather, do we, have we got a request from the barbecue people yet, or?
No, we have not.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Coleman?
Dawn, I also would like to thank you, and I know several community members have expressed their gratitude towards the efforts that you put out and you and your team put out in the community. So, keep up that great work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Counsel. We have the issue before us tonight, or we can postpone this and discuss it when we discuss other funding sources or other fundraising requests. So, what are your wishes, Counsel, at this point in time?
Well, it depends on this, you guys got to start getting your stuff together here pretty soon, ain't it? Because it's right around the corner.
Yeah, it's getting closer. We've got quite a bit of stuff already in place. The biggest thing right now is trying to get that young lady I was telling you about, Madison, booked. And so, that's kind of a, I mean, that's, I'm giving her 5,000 to come with her three ladies. So, that's kind of the biggest thing I'm waiting on. I didn't want to, you know, go ahead and approve that until I knew where we were standing.
And also, Dawn, if you heard our city manager, this money, there's only 10,000 set aside.
Right.
And we have this barbecue deal that comes in for five, so.
Correct. Right.
What would happen if we were to only fund 5,000? Where would you come up with the other?
I don't know.
No.
As far as our budget looks right now, even with the 6,000 that we were requesting from you, we would be in the hole about 1,300. That's pretty close to where we're at with the cost of the Christmas Light Parade. So, we may have to, you know, find funding for that or find sponsorships. Or in the past, we've been able to just go ahead and pay for that ourselves out of what we had set aside in our savings. But this will be our fifth Christmas Light Parade, so it's been kind of eating away at that, too. But something that we definitely don't want to see go away.
Sure.
So, we would probably just have to shuffle some things. And I mean, there's always a chance, you know, we'll have a huge banner crowd, and then it won't even be a problem. But I tend to budget, you know, on the conservative side.
Conservative, yeah.
And then, hope for better. But if it doesn't, I know that all bases are covered.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. What are your wishes? While we're mulling this over.
I'll make an attempt at this. I'll make a motion that we approve, add to this funding resource, $5,000 for the Alamosa Roundup Budget for 2015.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the Alamosa Roundup Funding for $5,000? Counselor Vahill?
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask the Counsel to maybe consider or ask Mr. Griege to amend that to 5,500.
What I'm looking at, Counselor Vahill, is the fact that we have, I thought we had two other people asking for that funding, for that. So, even though our city manager says it's only the barbecue people, but I thought there was a couple of people there. So, that's what I'm looking at.
So, we have a motion and a second for 5,500. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Or 5,000? I'm sorry. Seeing none, start voting, please. I'm missing one. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much, Counsel, and thank you.
Thank you. So, can I ask, would it be okay if we see how it goes, and then if we do need help with the Christmas Light Parade, come back later for that?
You are always welcome here, Dawn.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Counsel. With that, we'll move forward with business brought forward by city staff. Public Works, Pat, thank you for being here this evening. We've got three items, the Tucker Wagner Annexation Eligibility Hearing, the Eligibility Resolution Tucker Wagner Annexation, and the Architectural Services Agreement with Ron McClure for services specific to the proposed Parks and Cemetery Office. Thank you.
That was a mouthful. Good evening, Counsel. This is an eligibility hearing for the Tucker Wagner Annexation. This is simply, this doesn't, your passage of this resolution doesn't obligate you in any way to annex the property. It's just, it's simply your acknowledgement that it is eligible for annexation. It's an enclave that's located between West 7th and West 8th Street, west of Washington Avenue, and directly across the street from the elementary school. It's currently served with city water and sewer, well, there are city water and sewer mains. Services will have to be installed. It has curb and gutter on the south side, accesses to the south side of the property where we're made as a part of the West 8th Street project last year. And it's pretty simple. This is an enclave, and it will button up one of 14 enclaves we have in the city.
Thank you, Pat. And so, we need a public hearing on this. And with that, I will open the public hearing on the Tucker Wagner Annexation Eligibility Hearing. Is there any here, anyone here to speak for or against this annexation eligibility? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to Counsel for discussion or action.
I would just like to clear up. I discussed this earlier with Pat, that everything else on that block is city-owned?
Yes, it's completely surrounded by city.
City, yes. That's all I had.
Counselor Griege?
Yeah, I had the same concern, because if you look at the red block, it makes it look like that, the one to the east is out of the city. But Dawn, I mean, no, Pat corrected that, and that is also in the city, so.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, just one comment for Holly.
Yes.
To take note of, I know, I just now noticed, I didn't see this before, that the residents. see this before, that the resolution says that it was adopted the 15th of April, so we'll need to change that to the 1st of April if you do pass it.
Thank you, Eric, and we'll change that to the 1st of April if we can. Counselor Johnson?
If there's no other questions, in considering that change, I will move that we pass Resolution Number 6, 2015, finding the property eligible for annexation.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the Tucker Wagner Annexation Eligibility Hearing? Say none. Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up is the Eligibility Resolution for the Tucker Wagner Annexation. Pat, just a continuation?
Yes, this is just, this is just an action on the actual resolution.
My understanding is you voted on this when you took your vote.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're fine.
All right, then. Next up, we have Architectural Services Agreement with Ron McClure for services specific to the proposed Parks and Cemetery Office. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. In early February, staff released a request for proposals for architectural services for the proposed Parks and Cemetery Office, requesting architectural floor plans, code reviews, and exterior elevations. It was our intent that those materials would be used as supporting documentation for a planned Division of Local Affairs Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance Grant, application to supplement the budgeted funds for the proposed construction. We received no replies to the RFP. At that time, we reached out to three local architects that have had contracts with the city in the past to solicit bids for the work that we needed to have done, and Mr. McClure's proposal was the only one we received. His price, however, was well within those limits that staff had identified as acceptable during the first RFP process, and will be paid from the $190,000 budgeted for the project. His services will provide all of the planning and design necessary to present a complete and effective bid package to contractors, which will allow them to confidently bid the vertical component of the project. When it's, when the completed bid package is presented, there are fewer uncertainties and variances that the prospective bidders need to pad in their quotes, which should result in lower prices to the city.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments on this issue? Counselor Gregel?
I think this is something that we've been discussing here for several years, especially the restroom part of this facility that will be available to, you know, people like for Memorial Day, or even funerals and stuff like that, where in the past, you know, we had some kind of difficulties. I think it's a good project, and I think that this gentleman putting together this whole package deal, it does save the city some money on that, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Not. If there's no other questions, I'll make the motion that we approve an Architectural Services Agreement with Ron McClure.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this issue?
Yeah, I do.
Counselor Veale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for Pat. Where is Mr. McClure out of?
Down north.
Down north, okay. Thank you.
Start voting, counsel. Let's try this again. Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have City Manager Legal, Resolution Number 5, 2015, Creation of Noxious Weed Advisory Board. Heather?
This is an item that Hines, Eric, and myself had a discussion on. We've come at it from different ways. As you know, we were taking a look at what we describe as noxious weeds within the city and enforcement, and Eric made it clear that we would need to circle back around to address some of the other requirements from a noxious weed perspective. And we've also heard from Hines as far as some preliminary ideas and the timeframe for dealing with our noxious weeds and creating a plan and all of that. Bringing those two together is essentially, this is one of the first steps in that, in order to be compliant with the Colorado Noxious Weed Act, we do need to have a board that is appointed that would review the plan, would make recommendations to council, make recommendations to staff, that type of thing. You can see the language in your cover letter in regards to the different items the board would do. We felt that it would probably be most appropriate to know who this board's going to be in order to present a draft plan to prior to bringing to city council. Once the plan's adopted, this board may only need to meet once a year. And with that in mind, we didn't necessarily want to create an entirely different board. We also weren't necessarily sure if we wanted to use a board that may be the county or the valley that already exist, and we have no appointment authority over either. So we wanted something that would have a local flavor when they're looking at our issues. So as we discussed it, something that stood out for us would be that the recreation board is already involved in taking a look at the ranch where a lot of these items might be found, and it would maybe just make sense to have them also serve as our noxious weeds board. So during those times, we need them to act officially. They would, you know, convene a meeting and take business and adjourn, and we wouldn't have to create a separate board. The last option that council could take a look at is if you wanted to name yourself this board. I think from a staff perspective, we thought maybe you didn't need to get involved with the weeds, and we could have somebody else involved with that. So that's essentially why the timing of it is now. Prior to us having a plan, we just felt it'd be most appropriate to have whoever's going to be involved be involved with reviewing the plan, and for us, it made sense to look at the recreation board.
Thank you, Heather. Counselor Johnson?
Well, considering the number-two option, I really like the rec board, because I don't want to do that. And also, the recreation board has absorbed the ranch function, so that absolutely makes sense that they make those type of decisions. I believe they've absorbed some of the ranch board members, so there's some quality people that know quite a bit about weeds. The only thing that I question with if we appoint the entire Recreation Advisory Board, I'm a little concerned that we have too much city representation for a weed board, because currently we have a counselor, the mayor, Hines serves on that as, and the city manager. And I'm not sure we need that much city participation in that board. Possibly, I don't know, maybe it does. I think maybe just Hines and the mayor, or Hines and one counselor would probably serve properly. Any feedback on that? That's just a thought.
If you want, you could, you could name the advisory board minus the two council members, and it's just the city manager. I think, Hines, you're there as advisory, or are you actually, it's just the city manager that's actually appointed through the charter. So I think if you wanted to amend that and say the recreation board minus those three positions, that would be fine. Obviously, Hines would continue to work closely with them in regards to the plan and staff recommendations. Would it make sense to have Hines as an official partner? My opinion, I think what makes most sense is staff's the one that's going to be developing a lot of the plan, who's going to be doing a lot of the research, and that they're making that presentation to the board, and then the board can give feedback on that, and have that type of relationship, is what I would recommend.
Counselor Veale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How often would this board meet?
In the beginning, depending on the type of plan, what their comments are on the plan, it could be a few times for the development of the plan. Once the plan's created, it could be that we just meet annually to make sure that, you know, how much were we successful at? Do we need to modify the plan? Kind of that check-in. If they wanted to be more aggressive and get more involved in the public education and some of those aspects, it could prompt some additional meetings. So it could be somewhat self-directed as well.
Thank you. And I'd like to agree with Counselor Johnson about amending the board, having less city involvement a little bit. Thank you.
Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, I know John Brownell is on that board, and Paul Torre. Who else from, besides city people are on that board?
David Mize.
Oh, David Mize, okay.
The gentleman formerly of ASU?
Yeah, Helby Conley.
Okay, is that, is that for, besides the city personnel? Okay. I know John Brownell and Paul probably have extensive knowledge.
Jeff Owesley.
Oh, Jeff?
Jeff Owesley.
Okay. Also, it's a very limited budget to begin with. $5,000, and 2,300 of that is for equipment, so that won't go very far.
And that's correct. Until we had a plan, it was hard to know what we needed. So we wanted to put something in there, but that could be something that changes in recommendations for future budgets of how much we need to start dedicating towards these efforts.
Do we already have this, is it a John Deere? Did I read truck, or a JD?
We have all equipment that, all 5,000, we're just going to go to camera booth this year.
Okay, you're not going to purchase any additional equipment?
We did that last year, last year.
Okay, I saw 2,300. I thought that was for equipment. I don't know what I was, and 2,400 for herbicides. I saw that somewhere in here. Am I seeing things?
Yeah, you're right. 2,400 for equipment, 2,300 for herbicide.
It's broken down.
But we already have the equipment, I understand now. Okay, so the entire 5,000 is for herbicides? Okay.
That was 2014 budget.
Oh, okay, I see that now, 2014. Okay, very good, thank you.
Counselor Gregel?
The only concern I had is if we're going ahead and duplicating what the county's doing already. Has the county got a board like this? I know the county had equipment that we could have probably even worked to deal with the county, so we could do both of them. And that's one thing that I think we need to, in the future, if the county has something and the city needs something, we should work together in trying to work instead of duplicating the same programs and same boards. I think, and you said that they don't have a weed board out there, Heather, the county?
I don't know if it's a county or a regional board in regards to how they're appointed. I think, you know, when we did the noxious weed presentation to begin with, you made the same recommendation in regards of sharing equipment. I think we still plan to explore all the opportunities related to that. This is just the board that would review what our plan is and help kind of make sure we're accountable on if we're keeping up with that or not, and making recommendations to council. It's not that we have necessarily a problem of using, if it's either a county or the regional board, it's more that we don't appoint them.
Sure. That's the only concern I had. Thank you.
Thank you. I had, I had an observation concerning Counselor Johnson's view of the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and a couple of other people on the board. Nine times out of 10, when things are discussed at that rec board, generally, it's, it's, city council members generally are just there for informational purposes, and nine times out of 10, it's not like we're trying to override or take over the meeting in any way, shape, or form. Information is basically what we're there for, but nine times out of 10, it's the members, the civilian members, the non-elected members, that really basically make the decisions for that board. But I understand your concern, and that one time I had that very same concern till I started to sit on that board, and then seemed very obvious that it's probably a concern that, you know, it's not something we need to worry about quite a bit, but... No, and I don't want you to get the wrong impression that there's a huge concern. It's just, it feels like when three of, there's three in seven, it's, it feels a little city-staffed heavy to me. And I'm not making any accusation that the board is being led around or anything to that nature. Just to get good public input, I think we need to step back sometimes as a city and let the public input drive the conversation.
No, well taken, Counselor Johnson. All right, so with that, is there any further discussion on this issue, Resolution Number 5-2015? Counselor Johnson?
Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I will make the motion that we adopt Resolution Number 5, 2015, and amend it to read, the Recreation Advisory Board with one person from council as a voting member, and one alternate as a non-voting member, and of course, Hines' involvement as a non-voting member, and the rest of the rec board.
So just to clarify, so Hines is not appointed to the rec board right now?
Yes.
So Hines is part of this?
So I don't know if he needs, if Hines's role would need to be part of your approval of the resolution. The only parts you would need to clarify is if you want the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and the city manager, I think are the only parts you would need to clarify.
And I would do the mayor and another member of council as the mayor's seat.
The mayor pro tem is naturally a, he's a member of that board as well, so.
May I interrupt?
Counselor Gregel?
I can't say nothing till they second them or whatever they do with the motion.
We've only got a...
Can I make a comment, Eric?
It's up to the mayor, how he wants to run the...
I would intervene a second to that motion, or...
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion on Resolution Number 5, 2015?
I did, Mayor. I guess, from the discussion we just had, we didn't want any of council on there. If anybody should be on there, it should be the city manager, because it's staff that's creating this policy and kind of directing this policy. So I'd rather, I don't know if Mr. Johnson wants to amend his motion, but I'd like to see maybe the city manager working, staff working with this group to put together whatever advice they need to have. Thank you.
Counselor Veale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Gregel, I think we should have someone from council on this.
Counselor Johnson?
And just, I'm not going to change my motion. My thought on that would be that with Hines involved in the meeting and council involved in the meeting, the feedback's going to get to our city manager anyway. Staff is, would be involved in the process, the motion that I made. Thank you.
Counselor Coleman?
I think staff involvement is very important, myself, so I would like to get Heather's insight on what she thinks about this.
I think when we were drafting this, we were actually somewhat careful with the wording on the expectations we'd be setting for this group. And one of the words that we actually changed is, the initial wording was that this board would create the plan, and that's actually something, it's a small word, but we changed it in regards to, we see staff doing a lot of the work and preparing a lot of this, and then taking it to the board for them to review, make comments, make recommended changes, that type of thing. And so we wanted to make sure from the onset we were clear in regards to that staff's really going to be doing a lot of this role. We hope they become very well-versed in the weed management and noxious weeds, but more of the expertise burden was going to be placed on staff, but we do need them from an accountability perspective. We do need them to meet this requirement through the state and to have the public input. So Hines is going to be extremely involved, and obviously, Hines and I work very closely. If council wants me to also be on this, that's fine. If they don't, I'll still be involved as Hines deems necessary to involve me. It could be that a lot of this is very straightforward, we're not reinventing the will, and there's a lot of stuff there for Hines to rely on as well for staff.
Okay, with that being said, I know Hines is very capable of making sure that he relayed that information to you. Since staff is very, is a very important part with the creation of the plan, do you think by removing you as the city manager will, I guess, delay some... guess, delay some of the processes as we move forward, because I know the noxious weed issue is something that's very important to the community at large?
I think the only role I could serve is if for some reason this board started to get a little off course, I know sometimes it would be helpful to maybe have me help get them back on course, not that Heinz couldn't do some of that himself, but I don't anticipate this board getting off course. They've got a long history of working positively as an advisory board, as the rec advisory board, so really my role, I'm not an expert in this, unless they start having group dynamic issues, I don't know if I'd bring much more benefit to the team.
Thank you very much, Heather. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Gillespie?
Well, I was going to recommend that we have the city manager on that board also, but after hearing the city manager, I will, I am ready to vote, I guess.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or do we need a clarification on the motion?
I need a clarification.
Rusty, would you clarify, please?
So the motion is the public portion of the Recreation Advisory Board, one member from council, and then of course Heinz will be the staff representative for that board, for that committee.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson, and obviously the member of council, Eric, does he need to be identified?
No, I don't think so, but currently there are two members of council, is that right? So I think you might want to, amongst those two, figure out which one it is if you're doing that.
Then I will say the mayor as the member and the mayor pro tim as the alternate to that board if the mayor's not available.
Thank you, so we've got clarification on the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Start voting, please.
The motion carried six to one with Counselor Giegel casting the no vote.
Thank you, council, and next up we have committee reports. Who has a committee report this evening?
I guess I'll.
Counselor Giegel?
I guess I'll start. On the airport board, we finally got it, got that strain out, got going in, in the right direction. We got Chris Moore, who will be the interim airport manager, with Brittany De Herrera being the finance person on there, and so far they're on schedule, everything's pretty much, they should be closing it down pretty much now and, and turning the keys over, I believe on April the 15th, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Giegel. Anyone else with a committee report? Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, the library met last evening, and Salea gave a wonderful presentation on the Little Free Library program. She currently has two libraries constructed and plans to have six more built, I believe we have one for demonstration here that Heinz is going to display. I'll place more information in the reading file for council if they'd like to read that. We discussed the frequency of the board meetings, and after lengthy discussion, we decided to leave the schedule as it is until at least the next meeting. At that time, we will discuss several different ideas that were suggested that would give the library board some direction. This may include work at increasing community involvement, having volunteers work on special programs at the library that staff does not have the time to do at this time, or have volunteers spend time reading to small children or the elderly. Becky Steinberg gave an update on the children's library and the excellent response to the Storytime Fridays that she's been conducting. Becky had a special event for the children called Rubber Band Mania, in which they made special projects out of rubber bands. She is currently working on plans for the summer reading program, and I ask each of council to be sure to look at the archaeological display in the front of the library. I'm not sure that's still there, I was in there this evening and didn't see it, so maybe it's been removed already. And I'll also mention that at this time, there's two vacant positions on the library board. If anyone is interested, please contact the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Stefano?
I also attended my first meeting with the golf board, and it really, a really positive, they're going forward with a lot of stuff, they're having an Easter brunch dinner for Easter Sunday, they have a lot of banquets planned, so people are stepping up to, to support it, and I think it's really positive right now, and they're doing a real good job.
Thank you, Counselor Stefano. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for Mr. Stefano or Heather. Now that the golf course has been open, how are we doing? Are the numbers up? Springtime, new season, stuff like that, how are we doing?
You mean on the golfers?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're projecting, they're running a special right now in the newspaper and the courier, two for $25, or you pay so much on the discount, and it's, they're really moving forward, they're really trying to, to accommodate a lot of people, ASU and just a lot of groups like that, so it's, it's looking pretty positive, they're stepping up.
Unfortunately, I had to miss the meeting last week, but I think the manager sent his report that may have had some numbers that we can forward to city council as far as, I think what Mr. Stefano's referring to generated the interest where they're running some deals if people signed up by certain times, and I think they saw some activity related to that. I can also give them a call and ask them that question specifically as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Also, I'll, I'll add that it's a little early let, early to get those statistics, but I think considering the volume out there, that things are picking up, so, looks good.
Counselor Giegel?
Mayor, as long as we're on that subject, I'd still like to know, just as Counselor Vehill, as how are we doing on that line of credit and stuff, if that's been taken care of, and I think that's something that we're going to have to visit eventually, I know Eric has told us at, at the end, if something happens, we're responsible for that, so if we are responsible, I think there's going to be, I think there's a limit, and this is a discussion we might have at a retreat or whatever, of, of a limit, a cap on how much money on that line of credit, because if something happens out there and we get hold, holding the ba, the whole bag, it's going to be pretty tough, so.
I'd kind of like to echo what Counselor Giegel is saying as well, I think it's, in the end, we're responsible for whatever expenses are incurred out there. I did include a, an article by, or through the Denver Post specifically dealing with golf courses nationwide, I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to look at that information, but nationwide golf courses are, are taking a fiscal hit, and it's because the sport is not as attractive as it used to be in the past, and so I think we're also suffering from that, but I think it's an excellent opportunity for us to discuss this probably during our retreat Charlie, and look at, look at how much we want to fund and what kind of funding we're willing to undertake specific to this issue. All right, anyone else with a committee report? Seeing none, we'll move on to staff announcements, and Heather?
We have quite a few, some of the quicker ones I'll cover. Myself and I believe Mr. Coleman and Mr. Giegel will be attending the Rio Grande Leaders' Course next week for the, the water education. It's every night at 6 o'clock, and we're not allowed to miss one, so be patient with us, so we will be doing that next week. The mayor and I were invited by Sam Mamet with the Colorado Municipal League to attend a meeting he was coordinating with Adams State University and some of the local leaders here in the valley. I think it was a very positive meeting, we had some mayors from some of the surrounding communities, some other administrators, and essentially it was to talk with ASU on if there's more partnering that we can do, if there's different types of internships, if there's different types of research projects, how them as an institution could benefit from us as communities, and if there's ways as, us as communities could benefit from them as a resource. So I think it's a very positive meeting and a lot of sharing of what each community's dealing with and, and working and struggling with in, in the valley, so it was good. I think moving forward, the mayor has been tasked with co-chairing the group to continue to explore this concept and, and to bring forward some different ideas, so we're looking forward to that. I think several of you guys may have received some different types of calls related to some of the work we were doing out on the, the pink elephant. I think the calls ranged from excitement to confusion to maybe people not very happy about it, so I think it probably would be appropriate to do a bit of an overview of, of what exactly was, was going on and, and make sure there isn't any confusion. I know someone I spoke to was under the impression that maybe this means it's just going to be a parking lot, and no, that's, that's not what it's going to be. I don't think any of the partners that contributed to this park, this project, contributed those amounts with the idea that this was just going to be a parking lot. What we have done is we've taken a very low-cost approach to try to make use of that property until it does develop. It's not paved with the expensive stuff, it's the asphalt chippings, but we needed something that would compact and be hard enough to where we could stripe it and make it a little bit more organized compared to if it was just a dirt parking lot. We didn't want to spend a lot of money though in case it develops in a year, so it's something that we hear a lot from the downtown merchants on parking concerns and constraints, and for the time being, when it's empty, we wanted to make use of it. It's also allowed us to have some discussions with the farmer's market, and I think they're looking at utilizing that site, which will also alleviate some of the usage of the city parking lot that they were previously using, so it's really going to turn into a space that will be nicely used, and obviously ACID still owns the property, and that, that has not changed, and nor has the, the vision for that property either, has not changed in regards to development. And the other one, last item I wanted to touch on, and then I'll let Heinz go, we are beginning our work on the comprehensive plan, we had initially set a meeting for our comp plan team to meet tomorrow night. At the last minute, we did some, some brainstorming on maybe we should expand this a little beyond just the two P and Z and the two city council members. The comp plan is really for the next five or 10 years is going to lead a lot of what our priorities are, what the discussions are with the community, and what we should focus on. So we've opened that up to extend a few invitations to some major stakeholders and partners in the community, so we wanted to have some major employers represented, the county, the marketing board, the school district, ASU, so we wanted to just make sure that, that we were getting a little bit more input into what do we think needs to go into the comprehensive plan, and then hopefully these individuals will help us get people excited to show up for the public meetings. Usually that's the most challenging part when you're doing an update, is getting the public actually excited enough to show up and provide their input, which if this is what's going to guide our decisions, we want to make sure we get that input. So we did cancel that meeting so far, our two representatives, we did cancel that for tomorrow night, but hopefully within the next week or two, we will reschedule that, and we'll have a few additional members, and make it as transparent of a process as possible and, and get the input. And with that, I think Heinz, if you wanted to touch a little bit on the Little Free Library?
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Heinz.
Evening, counselors. Yeah, before I get to the Little Free Library, I just want to make you aware of all, the community events are starting to gin up here for April and beginning of May. The first one that's coming up this weekend, April 3rd and 4th, is the Pitch, Hit and Run with Coach West. The folks from top of the World Series, they're planning the softball or baseball fields out east, they're offering a free clinic for youth 7 to 14. All the information that I'm presenting here is also located on Alamosa Rec site, alamosarec.org. Let's see, on April 17th, from 7 to 11 a.m., the KOAA 5 Health Fair will be here again, the annual event, they'll be over at the County Public Health on 8900 Independence Way. April 18th and 19th is the entrance free days for the Great Sand Dunes, and that is also the opening weekend of National Park Week. A fun event coming up on April 24th is the Broncos Salute to Fans, they're coming by again to Alamosa, they really enjoyed their last day here, so they're coming back, they're going to have photographs, photographs, opportunities with players, cheerleaders and Miles the mascot, and they'll be over at the rec center starting at 5, going to 6:30, so they'll be here a bit longer than they were last time. The Valley High Spring Fling Disc Golf Tournament is April 25th, they'll be over there at the Oxbow Recreation Area, and the information on fees and activities for that day is online. Finally, on May 6th, one of the things that happened is that the Hershey Track Meet is no more, that, that organization has gone away, and we've become involved with the USATF, with the United States Track and Field, and we're, we are a location, it's called Future Stars Elite Track Meet. Because of our vast numbers in the previous years, they, they automatically just chose us to be an elite site. So we'll again be over at Alamosa High School, it's a little bit different on the track and field stuff, but we fully expect it's going to be a lot of kids again this year. Any questions so far? So this is one of the items that the library staff have been working on, it's a low cost and very, I think, effective project for them, it's a venue for community outreach and literacy. So a little history about the Little Free Library, it was started in 2009 in Wisconsin, and they're a little bit of a nonprofit, tax-exempt organization, and their mission was to promote a sense of community, reading for children and literacy for adults. And just in those six years now, there's over 25,000 locations for this Little Free Library here in the country and also around the world. So the concept of the Little Free Library is take a book, return a book, and it's like a free book exchange, and it's okay if you take a book and you don't put one in, we, nobody's counting on that one, so. So basically, these little items are these, they come in various sizes, I mean, you'll, if you go online, they're from little to small to skinny to fat, is there's whatever the imagination. And they usually hold about 20 to 100 books, they're handcrafted, as this one is, or you can order them online through kits. The placement is as varied as the imagination is, I mean, we've seen them in front yards, parks, gardens, coffee shops, in and near restaurants, community centers, and just about anything that's easily accessible by the public. And why are we doing this? Well, we've come to find out, or come to realize that many people cannot, or afraid to, or just don't want to take on the responsibility of borrowing books from the library. You don't, you don't need a library card to get a book, and it doesn't generate any late fees because there's no due date, and we don't even mind if they don't return a book, and from feedback from other sites, they, the folks really appreciate the variety of books that's in there, anybody can donate a book that's in there, and in fact, most people will put more in than they take out. So some of the positive effects is, it's just on the community quality of life, there seems to be a positive influence on that. Some of the small business, local owners report that these libraries help attract and keep customers, and then the children, youth and adults of all ages and backgrounds can share in the give and take that these little libraries provide. Right now, we've got, let's see, one, two, three, four solid locations, and part of the process is using stewards, which is basically another organization that helps take care of these little libraries. The Friends of the Library, they're looking at putting one at the food bank, and they're putting it indoors. The Women's Citizen Club, they're doing two, and both are indoors, one will be more adulterated, adult material, and one will be kids, and they'll be over at Tukasa. And then the Friends of the Library and the, and the public library are putting one outdoors at La Lave across Matenzio's Market. And like I said before, these, you know, you could order these kits online, or in our case, we've, we have a carpenter and center. case, we've, we have a carpenter in center. He's going to make three of the indoor ones. And we've got Paul Patterson, who's been a, a long-time volunteer for the library and he's made two of the outside ones. As you can tell, it's pretty, it's natural right now. One of the things that we can do, we're relying on doing is that the stewards can pick the colors. I mean, you can have any kind of color. You can have all red, all black, fluorescent, whatever you want to do on them. So whatever they, the store would like to see in front of their establishment or inside their establishment. And one of the things we'll be talking about or setting up, once we start putting them up, there'll be some newspapers. We'll have Cole, we'll call Ruth in, get some photo ops and stuff and, and start putting them around town. And then right now, we're still in the planning stages, still looking for some other places. I mean, we've talked about that at the library board. You know, senior center seems to be, outside there seems to be a natural place to put one of those things. And it's just, right now, it's a very low cost and I think it's going to be a very positive project for the library staff to do. Any questions?
Counselor Gillespie.
Just a comment. I think this would be a wonderful project for either Eagle Scout or the Boy Scouts to work on or possibly even have the Boys and Girls Club build these, but a great project. Thanks Heinz.
You're welcome. Yeah, they definitely can become one of the stewards like Tucasa and those folks are being, doing that. So yeah, it'll, it's, it can grow.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you Mayor. Sometimes things like this come up and you wonder, why the heck didn't we think of this sooner, right? Great idea, thanks for jumping on that Heinz.
You betcha. Well, internet's a good, good thing sometimes, good ideas.
I think it's a great idea. You know, children are, are too busy with their electronic devices and this is an opportunity for them to actually grab a book and do some constructive reading other than just playing games on, on their computers. So congratulations on that. You're right Rusty, this is something that should have happened many, many years ago. Thank you Heinz.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And I think we're done. Thank you. Heather?
I think Pat wanted to offer just a little bit of an update on the SID project.
Good evening again. I have a quick update on the Carroll Special Improvement District. As I'm sure you're aware, it's time for things to start happening out there. We, we've had some back and forth discussions with a design engineer dealing with grade and drainage issues, just some, some different things, trying to figure out better ways to accomplish the same thing. Because of that, we're a little behind the original schedule that was, that was derived in December, but we're still on good track to start construction at the beginning of the construction season, just like we had hoped. We'll have basically four contracts for you to award at your first meeting in May and you should start to see equipment moving in, materials, survey stakes, all sorts of activity out there soon thereafter. So you'll have, you'll have those contracts to award the first of May and you'll also have the first reading of the bond ordinance.
Once we, we've been sharing this information with the other parts of our team, including Eric, bond counsel, and the financing company. So once they've agreed and said, yep, this is the, the timeframe, we haven't missed something, we'll also circle back around and make sure those who've been interested in attending the public meetings and following this closely are given that information as well.
Counselor Vehill?
I had a quick question. Do you have any update on the glass crusher?
Glass crushers moving forward. We, we applied for a state grant to supplement our, our committed funds. Hopefully, hopefully that'll come through. We're looking at different sources of, of equipment right now. I've got, got feelers out to actually four different state recycling associations every time. The used equipment basically sells for pennies on the dollar. So ideally, ideally we find some, we find some good used equipment. We'll, we'll see if that pans out. It, it, it goes quick. You almost, it has to be your brother-in-law that's selling it if you want to buy one. But I've got feelers out to different state organizations. I've got feelers out to probably half a dozen different equipment wholesalers and, and auction houses, things like that, that deal with that industrial kind of equipment. And we'll, we're still planning on moving forward this summer.
And even if we have to buy a new one, we wanted to make sure we don't do that before knowing if we got the grant or not, since it could cover a significant portion of that. So also getting a response on if we were successful with that or not would be helpful.
I'd like, I'd like to make a comment. I had a conversation with a gentleman specific to the glass crusher and I guess he has a daughter that lives in Durango that is involved with crushing glass. And, and my understanding was that they put that aside because they just had so much crushed glass, they didn't know what to do with it. I, I don't, I visited with our city manager specific to that, but I think what's happening is if we don't have a market for it, then all of a sudden, we've got to stockpile it. So is there any way that, or are you in contact with anyone specific to accumulating a lot of this glass from other counties? Because obviously, when they find out we have a glass crusher, we're gonna, we're gonna have an overloading of glass in our community. So do you foresee any talks with any of the other county commissioners or, or counties or municipalities? Pat, do you see a problem in, in any way, shape, or form as far as that goes?
We may come to that eventually. That, that is one of the areas that we're, that we're treading lightly. We're, we're hearing, we're, the difference between us and Durango, Durango was planning on the glass as a revenue source. They were, that's why they were crushing it. They had no, they had no reuse plans whatsoever. And when they realized, hey, we've got a lot of glass, we can't even ship it out of here and make money, that's when they, that's when they quit their program. We're looking at ours from a little bit, a little different direction. We're not planning on trying to retail it. We're, we're looking at reuse only and if we get to the point where we have excess, then we can look at different opportunities. But right now, we have, we, based on, we're not going to know how much glass we get until we start. I can only make estimates on, on EPA, estimates of glass concentrations and municipal waste streams, things like that. And I'm thinking, you know, we're going to get about 100 tons a year. That's my, that's my goal. That's, that's easy for us to reuse right here in town. We can, we can use it in, we can mix it in road base, we can use it for pipe bedding, we can mix the fines with our salt that we apply in the winter. There's a lot of different things we can do with it. So right now, I'm not anticipating huge stockpiles that we can't get rid of.
I do think though, it's something when Pat has been talking to people, it definitely got it on our radar, that should the entire valley become interested in this and we're the only ones doing it, that could change. And so that, when we talked about this previously, I wanted council to know, we are moving aggressively with the grants, moving forward with the research and all that, but the one area we're trying to be a little cautious on is if we roll this out and we do encounter something to where suddenly we're, we're seeing people come here and bringing it, you know, that's on the backs of the people who are paying the utility bills. And, and so we may have to look at other things, either agreements with other entities or monitoring more on who's dropping at the, the resource center. So it's something that's been on our radar. We're just hoping maybe it won't turn into an issue that it has become for some of the other communities.
Thank you Heather. Counselor Vehill?
Yeah, I'd like to maybe bring up this idea with council and ask Pat a couple of questions. Our, our yard waste program. I've, I've, I've been over there during spring break and there's just tons of it. What, what happens to all that stuff?
We, eventually it'll be ground. We'll, we'll park a tub grinder out there, we'll grind it and that'll be, that'll be a resource that we can offer for free. We can offer for mulch or compost, things like that. Or it'll, it'll compact it to the point where it's not so big a pile.
Because, because I think we should have a conversation too, that we're, I think we're getting a lot of folks from around the valley coming and dropping off their, their branches, their leaves, their, all the yard waste and maybe, maybe we need to look at charging them a little bit, something like that.
Counselor Diego?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up Counselor Vehill, because I was going to just make a comment on that. Like you say, it's that time of the year where people are starting to clean their yards and treeing their trees and whatever. And if you go back there, I've driven back there, we've got a big mess back there. And I know at one time, we had contracted with somebody to do some of that mulching and I think it fell through or something, I forget what happened.
Yeah, that contract fell through. We, the city had a grinder at one point, but it was, it was a surplus grinder that, that was broke down more than it, more than it operated. It was, it was a real safety hazard for the employees, things like that. We're just, we're looking at different, different partnering opportunities to get a, to get a grinder out there.
Well, I know, and, and I, I've had discussions with several people, including maybe our city manager also, that the, the county has this grinder, this tire shredder, which also I think might be able to be used for this kind of thing. So I think, you know, and it's parked out there at the county shops. I think if we would, could visit with the commissioners to see if maybe that they would allow us to use that piece of equipment. And years back, when Mineral Impact put the, put together the monies for that, was for, it was mainly used for tires, but it can be used for other, I think, for the crushing of these, this yard waste and stuff.
Yeah, we've, we've already had some of those preliminary discussions. We're, that's, that's on our radar and we're, we're working towards that. That's one of our options.
And maybe, I, I don't know when's the next time we're going to meet with the commissioners. I think maybe that might be one of the agenda items that we could discuss with them to see if they would allow something like that. So, thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It looks like we moved into yard waste. I just wanted to remind everybody, I read in the paper, the pickups are on Monday and they've already started, correct? Or they start this coming Monday?
They start Monday.
Start this coming Monday. So put that down on your calendars.
And we were, we were, we'll, we'll, we'll adjust the end of the season based on, based on weather. We extended it last year because of the good weather.
Thank you Pat. You know, recycling is such an important issue for all of us and I think it's becoming more and more at the forefront because, you know, carrying a lot of that heavy stuff to the landfill, of course, is very expensive for us. A lot of folks are becoming more ecologically minded and you guys staying on top of this, you and Heather and staff, is, is a wonderful thing for us because eventually, hopefully, we can recycle a lot more than we're recycling now. But thank you for that.
Well, you guys have certainly generated a lot of excitement by, by supporting that glass crusher.
Thank you Pat. Heather?
Last, we have Eric who has an update.
Thank you Eric.
Oh, you're welcome. You'll not thank me when you hear it, but just a, just an FYI that we had a request from the, one of the deputy attorney generals working with the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment for an open records request for our records relating to the Pink Elephant and to demolition projects for the last five years and to specific demolition projects, including the old Safeway store, the old Ortega Middle School, a few others I, that don't occur to me off the top of my head. So it's a fairly broad-ranging open records request that we are fulfilling. The county received a similar one as did, I think, the landfill. So the, the Department of Health is poking around at what has been going on with demolitions in the city and county of Alamosa. So we're, we're working on filling that.
Was there a complaint? What initiated this Eric?
I have no idea.
Thank you. Alright, we're done with staff announcements. We'll go on to council comment. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you Mayor. I just want to let everybody know that I, last week during spring break, on Tuesday, I was able to view a webinar by CML on tourism in Colorado. It was put on by a lady with Buxton and it's on YouTube, so you all can watch it as well. She offered a few ideas and things that we can look into. So I invite you all to look into that. And then I had a, a call from a couple of constituents dealing with Sunset Fields and with baseball coming up for the little kids. They were wondering if maybe they could, if staff could maybe go out there and clean it up a little bit, there's some trash. And maybe the possibility of putting some gravel down on the dirt as well as maybe some grass by the bleachers. I said I'd talk to you guys about it, but I wanted to let you all know. Thank you.
Counselor Diego?
Just, I kind of, I shared this with the city manager also, going back also to, to the Pink Elephant project that's been going on here for a while. I got several calls on that and I, I just pointed out to Greg that, that now he represents that area, but I got all these calls on it. But the fact that, why were we blacktopping a piece of property that didn't belong to us? And why weren't we using that material for all the potholes that we have throughout the, the city? And why weren't we even taking care of our own parking lot, which is adjacent to it? And I pointed those out to the city manager. She clarified the fact that the, the material that was used was not that blacktop, the real blacktop material and that eventually we would get to these potholes, that's not the material we use. But how much did we finally use, did we, did we spend on that extra work? Pat, I didn't, or maybe city manager?
What we can do is we're pulling the final receipts and we can send that to you. Our estimate was that it would probably be about $3,000. So we'll pull those final numbers once it's done and, and let you know. And then additionally to that, there was maybe just one or two potholes that were filled around that same time, but it was at a very high cost. We didn't receive the materials to be able to do potholes repairs until this week. So I think that's an important clarification for the public in that it, it was not the same material that's used for potholes and if the crews weren't working on the parking lot, they, they wouldn't have been doing potholes anyways. So it's probably a very important clarification. Pat, did you want to offer anything or?
Because I, I know that there was several, some really big potholes there on, on First Street and that's something I think we're going to have to eventually address, that whole First Street situation, because it, it, it's become a big, big problem.
Yeah, the big potholes on First Street were patched this morning actually. We were waiting for, we have, we need a specific emulsified oil for our asphalt patcher and that oil arrived Tuesday afternoon. The material that was used on the Pink Elephant wasn't, it wasn't hot mix, it was asphalt millings. It's basically ground up old street that you put some water in and roll it. It doesn't make an ideal surface by any means. It's better than gravel, but it was a, just a very low-cost alternative.
But like, like I told the city manager, when you try to explain that to the ordinary constituent out there, to them it's blacktopping. And you're fixing a road, you're fixing a piece of property that doesn't belong to you in a sense. And I know we've put some money into this project and we want some kind of economic development to come out of it. And so it's, it's, it's a tough deal, you know, when we get those calls to try to explain it to, to.
I've also mentioned that we're, we're grateful to ACID as a private property owner, that they're allowing us to use it for public parking in the meantime. It's something they could have closed it off and not allowed any parking on there. And so at least in the meantime, we're able to address some of the concerns that I know we hear about not enough parking and, and make some use of it, the farmer's market. And so hopefully for around 3,000 and we'll get those final numbers, we were, we were able to make use of something that might not develop for a year or five years and get some organized parking out of it.
Heather, am I, am I mistaken in the fact that council had agreed that that would be temporary parking space before any developer would come in there? I mean, we were going to use that for parking all along after the demolition of the building. That's what I understood.
That was, that was the discussion, but it wasn't something that was necessarily voted on, since it was an amount of 3,000, it's the, within the threshold where the city manager can move forward on it. So, you know, I want to be clear, it wasn't something council voted on, but that was part of the discussion when we discussed other items.
I, I think as the summer progresses and, and the railroad begins to take off, I think that's going to be a very necessary space, not only for parking, but for other venues as well. And of course, the farmer's market in the fall is going to utilize that. Hopefully, we can get it developed before then, but I.
I was going to say something, but I got to cut it off here. I'm sure you say that we're grateful to ACID for allowing us to use that parking, but the amount of money that we put.
And there, I think is, is, we put a very large amount of money in that project for them not to say, well, we're going to fence it around and not use it as parking. So I, I think it's kind of, we appreciate that they, they allowed it, but by the same token, the city of Alamosa put, I think, over a couple hundred thousand dollars into that project with grants and so.
Thank you Counselor Grego. Counselor Gillespie?
Thank you Councillor Grego. Councillor Gillespie.
Yeah, Pat, does that material, will that compact enough to paint striping on?
Yes.
And it will hold up?
It, it, it's not going to hold up like hot mix, but it, it'll, it'll last for a season, season, maybe two. Yeah.
Councillor Stefano.
Anyway, Pat, I think it really looks great. It was an eyesore that needed to be reduced. And the parking lot, I, I've gotten a lot of comments from the constituents out there, how great it looks. People get confused when they're turning because they, you know, stuff like that. But also, I, I've seen the guys that work on State Street. There's a lot of potholes that have been patched and a good job. And I know you guys are on it.
Thank you.
Pat, I've got a question for you, specific to Eighth Street. When is that going to resume the construction on Eighth Street?
This spring.
This spring.
As, as a part of our street improvement project. We'll be working on West Eighth Street and Clark from Maroon West.
Okay. Thank you Pat. Are there any other council comments? Saying none, I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned.